Good evening, everyone. I've never gavelled to order a meeting of the Cape Elizabeth Town Council in 38 years, no, never had to do it. But the reason I do it tonight is that usually when the council chair isn't here, the finance chair of the council presides a meeting. This evening, the council chair had known an advantage. Wasn't going to be able to with us. Kathy Ray, who's the finance chair, had a family issue come up just within the last hour or so and is unable to be here. So usually, the town clerk would call the meeting to order in one of these unusual circles, but she's busy getting ready for the election this evening. So as the clerk pro tem, I called the meeting to order. And the only thing I will do is, in that capacity, other than take the notes thereafter, is to ask if there is a motion to appoint to elect a chair pro tem for this meeting. Patty?
I move that Jessica Sullivan be named for chair pro tem if she will so accept the job this evening.
Thank you. Counselor Brennan, is there a second to that motion? Counselor, I should be taking notes.[97.14][97.14](laughter) Counselor Gobin, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Jessica, you're in charge.
I hope you don't mind, Jessica.
No.
Okay. My center is down. I'll share the agenda with, I've written on with Mike. Okay, what do you think? All right. May we please have the roll call?
Yes, Chair McCloslin. Counselor Gobin?
Here.
Counselor Brennan?
Here.
Counselor Jordan?
Here.
Counselor Lennon?
Here.
Counselor Ray? Chair Pro Tem Sullivan?
Here.
Great.
Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Ledance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, deliberate, just, and for all purpose.
Are there any Town Council reports and correspondence? Counselor Gobin?
Thank you. I wanted to report out on the activity of the Spurwink School Reuse Committee. Some of you may have seen, in the first week of June, we put up on the town website. And there was also an article in the Cape Courier about a request for information on RFI that the committee has put together. Wanted to just add a little bit of color and context to that in this meeting. The committee, you know, over the past year, there's been a lot of input and idea generation from the community, from staff in the town, et cetera, around what to do with the former school now that it's no longer being used for the temporary home of the library. And what our committee, which is an ad hoc committee that was appointed at the beginning of the year, wanted to do is try and standardize to a certain degree the types of information that we'd like to see back from interested parties that have an interest in reusing the building and the facility. So rather than some of the sort of informal ideas that had been generated and outlines for concepts of proposed uses, we wanted to try and come up with what's a pretty basic 10 or 12 question questionnaire as a very initial screening tool. And I say that with purpose, that it's not intended to be the only step that we're going to take to make any decision around this. This is a first step to try and understand who's interested, what they would be interested in for, and a little bit of basic information beyond that. If those that are watching or hearing this are interested, they can reach out to Facilities Director Greg Marles, the scheduled time to look at the building prior to the June 24th submission deadline. Again, that's June 24th. And from there, the committee will be looking to, you know, evaluate the very initial responses generated and take a look at scheduling further due diligence, whether it be in the form of in-person interviews or further written proposals or things like that. But this initial request is not intended to be overly burdensome for folks that might be interested. It's really just to try and have a level playing field and have everybody responding to a uniform set of questions. Our next meeting of that committee is Wednesday morning, this Wednesday, the 15th, at 8:00 a.m. over at the Thomas Memorial Library. And after the submission deadline of the 24th, the committee will next meet again in mid-July. I don't have the date off the top of my head, at which point we'll begin evaluating those initial responses. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, moving on. We will have the Finance Committee report. Finance Chairman is not here this evening. I will ask the Town Manager to speak to that if he would like.
Yes, thank you, Chair Pro Tem Sullivan. Trying to remember the titles. Just, I'm not going to give a complete financial report, but, you know, sometimes it's one day you see these links on the agenda. It just, a way of explanatory background is every month, the town has a monthly report that lists every single line item in the budget and what the expenditure is, what the budget is, how much money was left. Similarly, on the revenues, it lists what the revenues are expected for the year, what progress we're making, how much is the monthly revenue to date, to the end of the month, and the annual to date. There's also something called a dashboard that summarizes those details. So if anyone wants to find out anything about where the town budget stands, what the town budget is for anything, how we're doing, whether we're overspending, underspending, that's all available online at capeelizabeth.com for anyone to see. Just go to the most recent regular council meeting hit supporting material, and you'll see something that's labeled Monthly Financial Update as of whatever the month is. So there is a report there. Generally, revenues are looking good, expenditures looking good. We have what, about a little fewer than 20 days left to the end of fiscal year. There's a couple of accounts that look like they've overspent. The council's being asked for a transfer for a little bit more money to deal with those. Later on tonight's agenda, but most budgets are pretty well under. It helped that we didn't have to use a lot of road salt and public works overtime this year. Police overtime has been, you know, close to budget, kept within the reasonable amounts. Building permit income's doing well, excise tax income's doing well. The states come through with what we expected for revenue sharing. State school subsidies come through as expected. Cable franchise fees doing fine. And then sewer fees, believe it or not, those are almost 1.8 million so far since last July. So folks have been paying a lot of those. And we also have Portland Headlight sales, and those have actually, that little two-car garage, the sale so far since last July, one of been right around $500,000. It's pretty amazing for a little two-car garage, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I've got one. Down here under debt status, we're retiring $2,193,239 this year. Could you remind me and the rest of the council what that's for? What debt is being retired?
That is all of, that is, you know, at the beginning of the year, we had a debt balance of $17,247,295. That's various issues for school projects. It's things such as the community center, the swimming pool that was renovated a while ago, the police station, the public works garage, and some road projects and the whole host of things over the years. What I think what's important to note is that we're retiring 2.2 million roughly. And, you know, if you look at the bond that's proposed, that citizens voting on tomorrow, that's 1.4 million, plus there's another 600,000 that was authorized for. The pool needs a lot of work that's going to be happening in August. You know, the amount that's proposed to be borrowing this year is actually less than the amount that's being retired.
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I will now open the opportunity for citizens to discuss something, bring something forward to the Town Council that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone? Great. We need your name and address, please, and you have three minutes.
Okay. I am Jim Mora. I'm at 5 Wambek Road, and I'll speak tonight as a resident. I reviewed the zoning board of appeals of ZBA minutes over the last three years. I found 20 appeals have been brought before the ZBA. The only successful appeal was when, and I'll quote from the minutes, "The CEO felt the town is better served to have the zoning board make the decision." This data makes one wonder if the zoning board of appeals ever accepts appeals not requested by the CEO. Some residents, individually or collectively, feel so strongly that the code ordinance was violated, they appealed the ZBA decision to the Superior Court at an expense of thousands of dollars each. ZBA minutes include four appeals to the Superior Court over the last three years, and I know of at least one more not in the minutes. Three of these appeals show in the minutes as having Superior Court decisions. All three appeals through the Superior Court were remanded back to the ZBA indicating the ZBA made a wrong decision. That is, 100 percent of the Superior Court appeals over the last three years from the ZBA were sent back to the ZBA for the ZBA making wrong decisions. What happened on these remands back to the ZBA? All three appeals sent back to the ZBA were rejected again for what I see as more creative reasons. How creative? As an example, the June 23rd, 2015 ZBA meeting heard the appeal of a permit with lot boundary errors that allowed a permit to be issued for a debt outside the owner's property. The data on the property boundary errors were presented by the appealers, but do not show up in the ZBA statements of facts or conclusion. The ZBA did not address the main reason for the appeal and instead chose to address another issue. This is creative, but not in the best interest of the majority of the residents of Cape Elizabeth. Is the ZBA under a guideline, written or unwritten, that says no appeal will be accepted unless CEO requests it? What can you do? Create checks and balances for the ZBA. The ZBA, as it stands today, has shown they are not responsible with exclusive powers and duties. Two, choose board members' professional backgrounds to better match the population of Cape Elizabeth. Recent ZBA memberships have been largely comprised of attorneys. We cannot expect any board to act in the best interest of the majority of residents if that board is comprised of members with similar backgrounds. Three, choose a ZBA liaison that complements the ZBA member backgrounds and does not further promote differences from the population being served. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on a matter not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Next item is actually the Town Manager's monthly report. Maybe, would you like to add?
Yeah, I think just briefly, Mr. Mora, maybe he'll hear me, but on his way out the door, I think. You know, I think you need to be careful when you look at facts like that we just said. The zoning board of appeals, you know, does back up the code enforcement officer most of the time because the code enforcement officer, I think, does a good job. He looks at the rules, he looks at the laws, and, you know, neighbors don't like some of the decisions. They appeal it. But that's not to say that the code enforcement officer is wrong. You know, he's interpreted it. You know, I would expect that he's going to get it right most of the time. So it's not surprising to me that the zoning board would back the code enforcement officer most of the time. Secondly, it was said by the previous speaker that there were four cases that were sent back to, that the courts ruled against the zoning board. You know, I think you need to look at those four cases. What the courts found in most of those cases is that there were insufficient findings in the record to support their decision. That is not the same thing as saying that they made an error in judgment of interpretation of the ordinance. In fact, if you look at most of the Superior Court cases, whether here zoning board of appeals under Rule 8B or some other policy, generally, the court does not interpret the law to substitute its judgment for the zoning board. It instead looks at the procedures and looks to see whether or not the, you know, that there were sufficient findings to support a specific decision. So, you know, I just think, you know, I'd love to get a copy of Mr. Mora's statement. You know, we have it actually, we have the audio recording of it, to look at all the different issues and facts, but it's not as simple as it seems. And, you know, I'm pleased that the zoning board is finding the code enforcement officer has acted correctly in most cases. And I'm pleased that the court looks at the cases when people have grievances and appeals and see that maybe the record is insufficient. But, you know, that would be, I think, the reason why it came back to the zoning board three times, and they eventually ruled somewhat in favor of the applicant, because they did look at additional findings and studied the case some more. And in those cases, you know, if there were further appeals, the appeals generally have gone the way of the town, or the folks have dropped them. I realize it's expensive, but, you know, the other side of this, people have property rights. And, you know, oftentimes, people don't like it that their next-door neighbor has property rights. And as a result, someone wants to do something, the neighbors oppose it, and, you know, we go to court. That's the American judicial system. That's fine, but I just think to categorically say that there's a major problem because the code enforcement officer's backed up is just not in keeping with, that isn't a problem, that's something good. End of diatribe.
Thank you.
Again, can I continue my Town Manager's report?
Sure.
I just want to thank everyone involved with organizing Memorial Day. It rained. You know, we didn't have all the usual festivities, but the veterans' memorial over there, if any. You know, encourage everyone, even though maybe they didn't go have a memorial, like, go visit it. It's a good place for quiet contemplation of what the men and women who have sacrificed their lives offered, the flowers over there. Beautiful. There's been a change, I don't know if it's occurred yet, on listing the different wars and other events that people participated in. Again, want to thank all those involved with preparing for Memorial Day and seeing that, you know, at least if people didn't go out in what was supposed to be bad weather, that at least, you know, the monument looked nice, the cemetery was all ready to go, and the rest of it. Secondly, I also want to mention Family Fun Days this weekend and encourage everyone to visit and see what's going on. It's at Fort Williams Park. Late mornings is the best time to go around noon time. Good place to buy food that's bad for you, and, although some of it's good for you, and to see a lot of kids having fun, so.
Great, thank you. All right, next, we're going to review draft minutes of May 9, 2016, and May 19 through 2016. First, may I have a motion to approve the draft minutes of May 9, 2016?
So moved.
Second? Is there a second? Thank you, Sarah, Counselor Brennan. Are there any errors or omissions? All those in favor? It's approved.
Who made the motion?
Counselor Brennan, seconded by Counselor Lennon.
I get the second.
Yep. The next one is the May 19, 2016 meeting. Could I have a motion for approval? Counselor Lennon?
I move we accept the minutes of the May 19, 2016 meeting. Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Counselor Brennan? Okay. Any errors or omissions in the May 19, 2016 minutes? All those in favor? They're approved. Next in our agenda is a public hearing regarding parking on Surf Road. I would remind everyone to maintain decorum as per the Town Council rules. If you would like to speak, would you please queue up? You know, it's time for everyone. And there is a three-minute limit, and we need your name and address. So I will now open the public hearing on parking on Surf Road. Would anyone like to address the council in this public hearing?
Frances Mindon, 5 Surf Road. We've put a lot of discussion into this parking on Surf Road. We seem to have overlooked one big issue, and that is, if we have parking on one side, people on the other side can't get out of their driveways because of the, the road is so narrow that when I back out of my drive, I back to the very edge of my neighbor across the street lawn. And I know that case exists on several different driveways on Surf Road. And that's all that I wanted to bring up on that issue.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Jane Reynolds, and I live at 16 Surf Road. I don't know from whom the request came regarding changing the parking on Surf Road, but I will say, as a community, we have been concerned with the activity that has occurred on Cottage Lane with the access to Casino Beach. And it has been an ongoing discussion. There's no secret that Surf Road is a narrow road. The primary purpose that someone lives somewhere is for quiet enjoyment, and I don't think the intention of Casino Beach was to have it become a public beach. Through the Cape Cottage Beach Association, people have been invited to enjoy the beach, and its citizenry has grown in attraction and interest. But to now bring parking to Surf Road will not eliminate the problem that Cottage Lane is experiencing, and I fear that it will increase the amount of traffic with people circling. And in that circling and becoming frustrated, they will become inattentive and more likely to cause an incident, not a favorable one, a very problematic one. Our street is narrow, our citizenry cares about the area. Today, myself, I went over and drove through the neighborhood, and when I got to the bottom of Cottage Circle, I was stopped by a red cone because somebody had blocked off the lower area for their children at play. And while that's fine, I had no choice but to back up. And when I backed up, I then ran into two cars that were parked on another circle, and it was very difficult for me to get out, and I live there. So I have to say that I don't think it solves the problem of the visitors that are not residents of the area from having more convenience. And to make a decision based on personal convenience and request above and beyond those that reside on the street, I find problematic. In addition to not only the circling concern that I have, there is definitely a trend, and I'm not a public safety expert, but there is a trend to ensure that where there are large mass areas for gathering, for frolic, for play, whether it's the orchestra, whether it's a dedicated run, or whether it's Casino Beach, that you don't block off your access from an emergency standpoint. And if we have no parking on Surf and have on all the years that I've lived there for concerts and for major runs, then I would say that there should continue to be no parking because we are a major access point to Fort Williams. And 24/7, not just the summer, 24/7, we should keep that access as a possibility because we might need it. Additionally, I would have to say that there are a number of people that get confused.
If you could please conclude your comments.
I think that parking on Surf Road will not prevent current traffic problems. It will increase it and lead to a negative incident, and I'm very concerned about it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes?
My name is Alec Bruce, and I live at 5 Cottage Lane. And probably most of you know that Cottage Lane is the other half of a horseshoe, the other half being made up by Surf Road. And I'm not sure exactly, this was years ago, but those of us living on Cottage Lane petitioned the town to limit parking to one side because of the concern of emergency vehicles accessing. And back in those days, I've lived there since 1990, you know, people, when they were parking, you really couldn't, you could barely get a car, you certainly couldn't get a fire engine. Now that Casino Beach seems to be more active, which is an issue separate from this, that many of the residents in Cape Cottage Park have been addressing, but one of the outcomes of that increase in activity is additional parking is occurring on Surf Road. And again, many of you may know that Surf Road is even more narrow, quite a bit more narrow, than Cottage Lane. So I'm here just in support of residents that couldn't attend the meeting tonight but have the same concern that we had in Cottage Lane about access for emergency vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council on parking on Surf Road? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Item 85, 2016, Parking on Surf Road. The Town Council received petitions regarding parking on Surf Road. One petition asks for parking to be prohibited on the side of Surf Road closest to Fort Williams Park. Town Council will consider an amendment to the town's traffic regulations. With the council's permission and the Town Manager's, should we invite Chief Williams to address us at this point on this item?
Yes.
Okay.
Back in the 1st of April, was approached and given a petition, a two-sided petition, that was signed by about, I believe it was 12 residents in the Surf Road area.
I'm sorry.
Is my time up?[1705.82][1705.82](laughter) And...
I'm sure you wish it would.
They do that to me all the time. And so I brought it forward to Mike and the Town Manager and said that their request was to look at Surf Road for no parking. One of the petitions was for resident parking only. If you remember, several years ago, we did that in the Maiden Cove area and Garden Lane area, which is extremely narrow, extremely tight, even more so than Surf Road is. And it's out of sight also, and I think that that's why the resident parking works well in that particular area. Therefore, when I looked at the petitions, and I had both of them, I chose to favor the no parking on one side of Surf Road. I went down and measured it, and it's about 18 feet wide. So if you park a vehicle on one side of the road, obviously, if you park a vehicle on the other side of the road, barely is a motor vehicle going to get through there. But, and so I'm more concerned about the emergency access, like the resident from Cottage Lane stated. But I'm here as a vehicle to bring it forward to the council for the residents. And I think it's good that we have a public hearing on it and hear their opinion on it. and hear their opinion on it. As you see, my recommendation is if it does go forward, that there be no parking on one side of the roadway. And that would be the side that's closest to Fort Williams. One of the reasons I chose that was people that are pulling up on Shore Road, if they look down and they see the no parking signs, maybe they won't go down in that particular area. And I know that the residents down there have been, had their sheer of people that are trying to get to the fort go down through that area. So my thought is if they see the signs, maybe they'll say, oh, there's no parking down there, I'm not going to go down there anyway. So hopefully, it would cure that problem also. So that's where I'm at.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Williams? Counsel Brennan?
Can you just clarify the problem with just having no parking there?
I'm sorry.
Clarify the problem with just saying there's no parking on that street? What's wrong with just saying no parking on?
On both sides of the street? You could do that, but if you did that, I mean, I think you hinder your residents from having family over. I know that they have, some of the residents that I know down there have older children that have, and so they would have grandchildren also. So when they come for a weekend, say Thanksgiving, then you'd have no parking.
What if you said only resident parking?
Well, that was what one of the petitions were. But if you did that, my thought is, is that you'd still have people come in there. Usually, you just have one sign when it says resident parking only. Is somebody going to see that coming through if you put it at the beginning of the street? I don't know. I just felt, in my opinion, that one-side parking would be better and people would notice that more than they would resident parking.
Counsel Grant?
Is it, the parking currently two-sided on both sides?
Is what?
Is the parking on both sides of the road currently?
Correct.
It is?
It is.
I'm just thinking of the woman who spoke first, who was saying that if one side would prevent her from getting out of her driveway. But currently, people can park on both sides.
Currently, people can park on both sides.
This would actually make it so it would be safer if, as long as they weren't blocking her driveway?
And in fairness, if they did park on both sides, I would hope that a resident would give us a call so we could come down and mediate that situation. Who was there first, I don't know. But, you know, I know that the officers have enough skill where they can mediate that and make sure that at least we could get an ambulance through or a fire truck through. Hopefully, a police officer would be able to get through.
Are there any other questions? For Chief Williams? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to open this to council discussion. Counsel Garvin?
It may or may not be pertinent, but given that Casino Beach factored into some of the comment, in the public comment, I am a dues-paying member of the Cape Cottage Beach Association. So I just wanted to bring that up as a matter of disclosure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's continue discussion on the item. Well, would someone like to make a motion? Or, we don't always, if no one feels that there's a need, we
Okay. I mean, okay, I'll, I have a comment. I drove down there today and I was like dumbfounded how narrow it was. I couldn't even imagine a car getting through with someone parked. There was no one parked there, so I couldn't actually test it. But it was, I couldn't envision a car being parked even on one side and a car getting through. They must be able to because they have been. But especially as you get toward the end and it comes down to like a footpath as it goes around the bend. I think the less, the more we can discourage parking. And Neil, if you think the best way is to have none on one side because it's a much more visible sign, then I trust you that's the best way. But I mean, my overall opinion is the less parking anyone does there, particularly people visiting or trying to go to Casino or Fort Williams, the better. It seems like such a not-good place to park. That was my feeling from looking at it today.
Anyone else? Counsel Garvin?
I would add to this, just the notion of the long-range view. I know that later in the year, we're sure to be discussing a lot of different ramifications of the increased use of Fort Williams and, you know, potential mitigation of overcrowding there and parking concerns there. I have a real legitimate concern that any alteration to current parking regulations at Fort Williams could have a negative detrimental impact on a lot of these surrounding neighborhoods, whether it be Cape Cottage or across the street in Sherwood Forest and things like that. So I think a decision made on this should not be made in the narrow view of the problem that has spurred the discussion around increased activity in the summertime and use of the Casino Beach and increased vehicle traffic associated with that. But also through the lens of the longer-term problem of what happens if we're seeing anything that might cause people to look elsewhere to park outside of the park but still try and access the park? And the sort of unintended consequences that could develop from that, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? I mean, I'd like to add that we did receive five emails before this evening from area residents, three being in favor of the proposal, two being against it. I think that, I mean, I'm sensitive to the concerns that there might be an increase in circling potentially and also from the citizen who's concerned that with one-sided parking, she's going to have a tough time backing out. Even with those, I think that the prospect of emergency vehicles not being to get down to where they need to go is probably, I mean, that's my overriding concern. It seems that parking on one side of Surf only at the moment, to me, seems like the most reasonable and safest approach. I do realize it's going to inconvenience some people. So anyway, those are my thoughts. Anything else? Is there a motion? To approve the, yeah?
I move we amend the town's traffic regulations, section 13-2-3, no parking at any time. There shall be no parking at any time on the southeastern side of Surf Road, beginning at Shore Road and extending to Garden Circle. And on either side of Surf Road, northerly, from 60 feet northerly of Keys Lane to the terminus of Surf Road at Garden Circle. All other sections remain unchanged.
Is there a second? Counsel Jordan?
Just have a question. I was looking on the map. What is Keys Lane? Which one is it?
It's private, on the southeastern side.
Oh, so it doesn't show up? I was curious which, I'm like looking at it, it's much bigger. Keynote's different than the lane. I just wanted to make sure.
And you did second? Okay. All right, all those in favor? I'm sorry. She did second it, yeah. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Item 86, 2016, The Good Table Annual License. It is recommended the Town Council approve the annual malt, vinous, and spiritus license for The Good Table at 537 Ocean House Road. I'd like the town manager to, if you would please, present the item.
Thank you, Chair Protem. The town clerk asked the different departments if there are any issues, particularly with the operation of The Good Table, that would reflect on whether or not these permits ought to be granted, these licenses, and there were none. So it's recommended that you approve the licenses for submission to the state.
Excuse me, could I please have quiet in the chambers? Thank you. Is there a motion? Counsel Jordan?
Oh, I just have disclosure of my business.
Thank you. Counsel Grant?
I move that we approve the annual malt, vinous, and spiritus licenses for The Good Table at 537 Ocean House Road.
Second, is there a second? I noticed that the owner of The Good Table is here. We have another license, and I was getting them mixed up in my mind at the moment. So I just wanted to point that out. If anyone has any questions for Mr. Kostopoulos? Any other discussion? All those in favor? It's approved. All right. Next item, item 87, 2016, The Local Buzz Annual Licenses. It is recommended the Town Council approve the annual malt, vinous, and spiritus licenses and special amusement permit for The Local Buzz at 327 Ocean House Road. And again, if the town manager could present the item?
Yes, thank you. Everything I just said for The Good Table also applies to Local Buzz. The departments were queried and there were no issues.
Do I have a motion? Counsel Leon?
I move we approve the annual malt, vinous, and spiritus license and special amusement permit for The Local Buzz at 327 Ocean House Road.
Is there a second? Counsel Garvin? Again, I noticed that former counsel Jamie Wagner is here, the owner of The Local Buzz. If anyone has any questions, concerns?
Wants to speak.
Would you like to?
I just want to point out the Florida must be malt, vinous, and non-spiritus.
Okay. Okay. What's spiritus? Oh.
No whiskey.
Beer, wine. Oh, I thought it was like people being joyful.
Do you want me to remake the motion? The minutes will so reflect.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's approved. Next item, 88-2016, The Thomas Memorial Library Policy Updates. And I would like to ask the town manager to present this item.
Yes, thank you, Chair Protem. I'd like to ask that this be tabled. Everyone had trouble opening the gaming room procedure file. I understand the library trustees want to look again at the displays and exhibits policy and the building policy. So I'd recommend you table the item awaiting hearing back from them.
Counsel Garvin?
I move that we table number 88-2016, The Thomas Memorial Library Policy Updates.
Sorry. Is there a second?
I'll second that for Caitlin.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's approved. We'll table that item. Okay. Item number 89, 2016, Cape Elizabeth Land Trust requests for donation to assist in purchase of glue property near Jewett Road. Again, I'd like to ask the town manager to present this item.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think everyone's aware that the Cape Elizabeth Land Trust is contemplating an exciting purchase of what's known as the glue property near Jewett Road. It's off Gladys Road, which is off Baller Road. It's a 22.88 acre parcel. The land trust had sent a letter to the town suggesting that we might like to make a donation. They didn't specify any certain amount. But in the past, the town had donated 75, excuse me, 33% toward a couple of different purchases. The Town Council had discussed this at one point and suggested that they might consider a $75,000 donation. The Conservation Commission met and reviewed this and specifically recommended a $75,000 donation. But they also did it, and they had, it's in your packet, you know, online, a list of, you know, different restrictions they want to look at. You know, we haven't actually had our town attorney look at this yet. And it strikes me that the two parties are very close together. But there is a difference on what rights, if any, the town would have going forward on the management of the property. And, you know, the land trusts, excuse me, the Conservation Commission seems to have a pretty strong position. The land trust has communicated in a letter that's attached to an exhibit that they're not exactly happy with that. You know, I think you could debate those things. You could, you know, I would rather not draw lines in the sand right now. You know, I think that the real objectives are, and I've explained this in different meetings with the land trust, is that the town's interest is making sure there's a conservation restriction on the land. What legal instrument form that takes, I'm not sure. But, you know, there's many different instruments to do that. Let the lawyers figure it out. Second, and within that legal framework document, whatever it is, you know, the main concern that the Conservation Commission has that I think overrides everything is that, you know, we want to see it maintained in its natural beauty and, you know, all those provisions that would generally go into a conservationism. Second, we want to see public access. And that's usually in Cape Elizabeth defined as trails. You know, beyond that, you get into some other issues there that get kind of sticky and get emotional and get, people get excited about. And, you know, and I'm not sure the parties are really that far apart. However, you'd think so by the volume of, you know, visits and calls and some of those things, and I don't know. So, you know, I really think that, you know, this ought to be referred, you know, to come back to you next month at July 11th, you know, after you've had, the land trust has had a chance to speak and whoever else wants to speak, that it ought to be tabled until July 11th. And to ask the town attorney to work with the representative of the land trust to see if we can work out an amicable resolution so that the main objectives that we commonly share are accomplished, which is conservation of the land in its natural beauty and public access. And to me, you know, the wording that I drafted in the agenda is consistent with the Conservation Commission recommendation. And I don't use the word consistent to mean that it has to be 100% of what the Conservation Commission said. Consistent means that it needs to follow those general principles and it needs to look toward those objectives. But I really would hope that the parties can get together and, you know, we can celebrate working cooperatively with the land trust to achieve something that's going to be very good for citizens for the millenniums to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the council?
I didn't want to cut off the land trust from the one that commented.
No. Well, let me ask this then. Would the council like to hear from the land trust before we continue with our own discussion? Okay, thank you. Would anyone like, from the land trust, like to address the council?
Thank you. And I'm Cindy Crum. And since I don't reside in Cape Elizabeth, I have read that I can also state my affiliation in town, which is that I'm the executive director of the Cape Elizabeth Land Trust. And firstly, I want to just really thank you as a new executive director to an organization in town. I want to thank you for your past support of the land trust. It's really been wonderful to hear what the town has done with the land trust and in donations for the land trust over quite a few years. And I must say that I'm very impressed by that. And it's great to step into a position where there is that type of relationship with the town. I think one thing that has really been brought to light with these discussions with the Conservation Commission and with Mr. McGovern, the town manager, has been that there really is even more opportunity for collaboration. And I would agree with Mr. McGovern that both sides of the playing field, the town and Selt, are very interested in collaborating on many of these issues. So I think we have an opportunity ahead of us. And I think this is a perfect property to do something like that because there is the green belt there. There is opportunity for the type of connectivity that's so critical to the town's mission and their green belt plan. And I guess, you know, the other thing that I would say is that in terms of the primary concerns, in terms of being legally bound, that definitely the conservation value and the public access, whatever types of documents we do end up using, will be legally bound on that property. That's what the land trust is about. That's what would happen. So I did want to just really point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Jordan? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I'm Elizabeth Goodspeed, 59 Bellfield Road, speaking as a Selt board member. And I'm speaking on behalf tonight of the whole Selt board, which unanimously supports the idea of further collaboration with the Conservation Commission going forward. And as Cindy said, this is really a perfect property for that because we can work together on the placement of trails, creation of new trails, non-motorized, public access uses, and also increasing connectivity with both existing and future town trails. And I guess what we would like to see tonight is pretty much what you just outlined, Mr. McGovern, just that the donation be approved contingent on an agreement being worked out that takes into consideration both the Conservation Commission's motion as well as the concern that Selt had that was relayed in the letter. So, thank you.
Elizabeth, we need your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, 59 Bellfield Road.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. So, counselors. Counselor Jordan, you were...
Well, I have to give you a vote.
Okay.
You don't have to.
No, go right, well, go right ahead, and then we can have a motion and a second and start our discussion then.
I didn't, if we were looking to table it or if we could make a motion to commit $75,000 to the purchase of the glue property pending the outcome of negotiations of an agreement between the town of Cape Elizabeth and Selt.
I'll second that. Okay, discussion.
Of course, the board manager. With this proposed commitment, I believe that draws down or nearly completely draws down the land acquisition funds, is that correct?
Yeah, it reduces it, you know, there'll be $32,000 that you appropriated additionally to it next year, and with that $32,000, this would be after July 1, there would be some more monies available. But it's going to be tight. We're essentially drawing it down to almost nothing.
Anyone else? Counselor Lennon?
I guess I'll just say that I think it's a fabulous opportunity for our town to help, you know, buy this property. And also, I think, I have full faith that we will be able to, the town attorney can come to some type of resolution between the Conservation Commission and the mission, a poll in the mission of what Selt stands for, and really have a complementary partnership going forward. So I have, in full support, I guess my one question would be, can we approve it contingently on, and then would that, the attorney's draft come back in July? We could see it then? And would it be, so are we approving it, obviously, contingent on the draft from the attorney's? Do we then have to approve the draft in July?
That would be, yeah, let me...
Well, it depends on what the motion is, and I wrote down the motion is to conditionally approve a $75,000 donation pending the outcome of negotiations between CELT and the town.
Yes.
Was that what the motion was?
Yes.
Yes, I think if you look at the wording of what the motion is, that is what the motion is.
Okay, so wait.
Okay. So the answer to your question would be yes, then?
Sounds like it, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that would be in my interpretation, that we would then see attorney's drafts and approve those and maybe go through several, several stages of approval, who knows, but that we would have that, that opportunity. Any other comments?
I'll second that.
I think it was... Counselor Lennon?
I just wanted to comment that the agreement will be between Selt and the town of Cape Elizabeth. I wanted, as we'll get down further into the agenda, Conservation Commission is an advisory group to the town, so that we want to be clear that it is not going to be an agreement between the Conservation Commission and Selt. It is an agreement between the town and Selt, so that it's our responsibility as counselors.
That's a good point. Thank you. I am in support of Counselor Jordan's motion. I think, I mean, I've read through all the documents, and I appreciate the time the land trust has given to looking into this. I also compliment the Conservation Commission for their hard work and interest in representing the interests of the town and advising the council on their thoughts. But I think, given everything we've read, that putting this in the hands of the lawyers to come up with something that we can jointly work on is appropriate. So, any other discussion? All those in favor? It's approved. Next item, item 90, 2016, approval of quick claim deed. It's recommended that the town council authorize the town manager to execute a quick claim deed for property at 6 Pine Point Road to the estate of William Lowell. All back taxes have been paid. Would you like to address this?
I'd be happy to. Buddy, within the last year, the town foreclosed on property on 6 Pine Point Road for the non-payment of taxes. It was from the estate of a longtime resident of Cape Elizabeth. The family has since paid the back taxes. We have not, we would formally accept them only upon approval of the quitclaim deed. And what a quitclaim deed says basically is we release our foreclosure, we're quitting our claim on any attachment we have on the property, so it would revert back to the estate of William Lowell.
I have a question. So then this allows the estate to proceed with probation or not?
It gives them back full title to the property, subject to whatever other restrictions that may be on the property, but the town quitclaims its attachment on the property.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Sure. I move we authorize the town manager to execute a quitclaim deed for property at 6 Pine Point Road to the estate of William Lowell.
Is there a second? Second. Counselor Lennon? Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's approved. Item number 91, 2016, update of ordinances relating to boards and commissions. The ordinance committee has completed its work reviewing all of the provisions relating to the town's board, boards and commissions, and is recommending a replacement, Chapter 4 of the Code of Ordinances, establishing boards and committees and revised sections of Chapter 18, which is the conservation ordinance and Chapter 24, which is the shooting range ordinance. It is recommended that the proposed amendments be referred to a public hearing on July 11, 2016, at 7:00 PM at the Cape Elizabeth Town Hall. The committee also made other recommendations which are proposed to be referred to at a workshop to be scheduled. I'd like to turn this over to the ordinance committee chairman, Counselor Jordan, to tell us about all of this work and what it means.
Thank you. Yes, we met the ordinance committee six times to discuss the full replacement of the boards and committee ordinance. We changed several things, relocated a few things to different sections of our ordinance, including relocating the open space evaluation and preservation program into the conservation ordinance, as well as changing the composition of the firing range committee within the shooting range ordinance. We also created bylaws within the ordinance so that all standing committees can follow a single unit of bylaws instead of having to create their own. We also focused on making sure all committees were clearly advisory to the town council, removing any operational duties or activities that were not necessary within the committees. We also made that had been previously ad hoc committees that had been continuous, such as the recycling committee, into standing committees so that they can move forward with full committee stature, as well as welcome the community services committee that will be coming over when we take over community services on July 1. Other than that, we created several recommendations that we've asked the town council as a whole to reflect on at the workshop, including the membership number of committees, whether it is appropriate to reduce some of them to five rather than keeping them at seven. The implementation of all of these new duties and purposes, we want to make sure that it is unified across all town, you know, media, make sure it's corrected on the websites, make sure all the ordinances are up to date so that it's all the same and all the information is being sought, thought sought out and is correct. We are asking that the town council review the role of the town liaison and what exactly that means. And then there's a few issues with the bylaws of the Thomas Memorial Library Foundation. Because we changed all the committees to committees instead of commissions or trustees, we had to do, we had to create, create so that the town council was the, now the trustees of the Thomas Memorial Library. And in doing that, we create a little issue by having town counselors and trustees on the library foundation. So we end up with more town counselors perhaps on the foundation than we want, so we just need a little wordsmithing of that so that we can have some more citizens on there rather than town counselors. And then we request the senior representation on the community services committee to discuss advising the appointments committee, that we try our best to have representation of a senior on the community services committee. And so I make a motion that we accept the report, the new boards and commissions ordinance, set it for a public hearing for next month in July, and that we schedule to discuss these recommendations on the earliest workshop to our chair's convenience.
Is there a second? Second. Discussion. Any questions? Counselor Lennon?
I thought in the advisory portion that we're going to talk about in the workshop, we had also put out there that we might think about term limits of three terms, nine years. Didn't we put that?
It wasn't on our recommendations that we discussed at the meeting.
We had a lengthy conversation about that, don't you remember? And Maureen said, oh, the planning board should definitely be at least nine because they get up to speed and so forth and on. We wrote it in the bylaws, I thought.
We have term limits in the ordinance, correct?
Okay. But you're saying that wasn't a change?
Right, but there was, we didn't change anything, so we didn't put anything to be discussed as a whole, counsel.
Okay. So it's already written in there?
There's currently two term, right, you can serve two terms? Or is it three?
It's three.
I'd have to...
I believe it's three consecutive terms.
Three, that's right.
You can only chairman, you can only be chairman.
You can only chair two years.
Two. Okay.
I thought we were going to discuss that, but great.
No, no. Any other questions or thoughts? Well, I'd like to say that it was quite an interesting process, together with Counselor Jordan, Counselor Lennon, and myself. We are the ordinance committee. I think it was, it was very interesting to go through this, you know, at that depth of level, and I think that I'm very pleased with what we came up with. I think that we did a great job making things more uniform.
Yes.
I mean, that was, you know, that was really, I think, an important part of what we did, so that when you read through it, you'll see that there is a, there's very similar language with purpose, duties, responsibilities. Things are laid out in the very beginning for all committees, and then as committees go through, we go through those, the setup is the same as far as definition and purpose and so forth. And I think that's going to make it a lot easier for people, you know, going forward to quickly look up, you know, these boards and committees and see what they are and see what they do. It'll be a lot easier to sift through that. So I thought that in particular was really important. The other thought is behind changing the name from commission to committee, a couple reasons. You know, these are all advisory. The word commission has a heavier, heavier tone to it, but also, we, those of us who have served on appointments in the past have learned that we, there is, there's sometimes the expectation when somebody is going to volunteer to serve on a board of trustee or on a commission that there might be a financial expectation. And so we certainly want to avoid that. So those were the reasons behind the proposed change to have everything be a committee. So, anyway. Any other thoughts?
Sorry, I have one more to add. I agree with everything you said. I also think we made it clearer. I was happy as an English major that our language is nice and terse now. And also, I'd just like to thank Maureen, who did an enormous amount of work. She really did the heavy lifting in some ways. She'd bring us new drafts every, every meeting that we could work on and go from there. So just to give a shout out to her.
Thank you, absolutely. All those in favor? It's approved. Item 92, 2016, community services transition, I'm sorry, community services program transition. I would like to again ask the town manager to present this item.
Yes, thank you. The community services program is transitioning from being under the responsibility of the school department to being a municipal department effective July 1. In order to do that, we've looked through different ordinances and codes and looked to see what needs to be brought up to date to do that. The personnel code, the only change that's needed is in Appendix A of the personnel code, it lists salaried positions. And the community services director and the aquatics director are salaried positions within the school department. Their wages are sufficient in, with the new Obama's regulation, some of you may have seen about what's a salaried position, what's not. They're within the guideline, even the new guideline. So it's recommended that those two positions be added to the list in Appendix A of the personnel code. Secondly, the administrative code spells out what the different municipal departments are, who the department head is, and the purposes of the different departments. So it's proposed that formally, community services be added as municipal department, that the department head be listed as a community services director, and then there's other sections that say what are the responsibilities of a department head and how they, how that all fits. So it just incorporates them into the same, the same regime as everyone else. And then, you know, I attempted to list what I thought were the purposes of the, of what the department does, and I checked to see what the school department had. They didn't have much. The listing there is a little lengthier than we had, but emphasis on helping populations of all ages, the seniors overseeing the pool, the fitness center, and in looking to promote wellness and good fitness generally in the community, and to provide enrichment with cultural, social opportunities, educational opportunities, facilities. Administrative code and personnel code don't need public hearings, so I propose that you adopt those. We also have a community services advisory commission currently that would be in total limbo on June 30 if nothing happens. So what I'm proposing is that you set up on an interim basis, an ad hoc committee that's called the community services committee. It has seven members and the purposes and duties as outlined. And what I did is took exactly what the ordinance committee just recommended, the exact language in every respect, and just, that would be the language that would fit the ad hoc committee until such time as you appointed the formal committee, you know, upon enactment of the new ordinance or something close to it. And finally, there's this question, what happens with the terms of all the people that were appointed by the school board? And it's proposed that they continue to continue to serve until their existing terms expire, you know, without interruption in their names and addresses, and those terms are listed here on the agenda for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Just as a point of procedure, are we, do we need to break these things up into separate motions or?
No, I, no, I think, it depends on how you make the motion. If you make the motion as to accept the recommendations on item number 92 and adopt the changes to the personnel code, the administrative code, then it's all done.
I was going to at least break it into the adoption of the personnel code and administrative code and then separate the committee.
Whatever you...
Because I think that for that to come back, because that's going to need to come back as a second issue, as it's only an interim decision.
Okay, so, so to help this along...
Okay.
So I move that we adopt the personnel code and administrative code as recommended under Agenda Item 92-2016.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Sarah. Sarah. Counselor Lennon? Any discussion? All those in favor? It's approved. And is there a second motion?
I also move that we, per the recommendation here, create an ad hoc interim community services committee with membership purpose and duties as outlined herein, and that the current members be continued over and confirmed onto this interim community services committee, and those members are outlined in the recommendation.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? So just to be clear, we will, the motion is expressing that once the transition occurs as of July 1, this committee as named will then become an ad hoc committee.
Yes, if the minutes could reflect that the motion should be effective July 1, if that wasn't clear. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Jordan?
And then, should the new boards and committees ordinance take effect after our public hearing, so it's probably most likely September 11th, this ad hoc committee moves in to become that committee? Can we make that all into one motion, or do we have to come back?
Yes, through the chair. What the intent is, is if that ordinance as you proposed is adopted after public hearing, we would, we would look at it, and at that same meeting where you adopt it, we would have motions similar to this to appoint members of the Thomas Library, Thomas Memorial Library Committee, of the Riverside Cemetery Committee and all that, so that it's clear... Library Committee, of the Riverside Cemetery Committee and all that, so that it's clear that the transition has occurred and that the terms are continuing on the same basis. We'll look through a whole series.
Great question, thank you.
Making sure everything's started.
And I purposely did not indicate sort of a sunset date when I said interim because of not knowing when we'll actually take that up. So it's intentionally indefinite.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor? It's approved. Item 93, 2016, Eastman Meadows Affordable Housing. And again, I'll ask the town manager to present this item. We have dealt with this issue before, I know.
We have. In 1992, the town adopted some mandatory affordable housing requirements, which basically said if you had a development of so many units, for every so many units, you had to set aside so many units as either low income or moderate income. If you did, chose the moderate, you know, there were slightly more than if you chose the low income that required. What's happened was, when, when Eastman Meadows was approved, they indicated that there'd be so many moderate income housing, and that they're allowed a income of up to $114,000, but that the sale price would need to be an amount for a moderate income house based on certain federal guidelines. Well, you look at that now, and it comes out to, the houses need to be sold for $395,022. You know, the developer, Fitzpatrick Associates, has, or whatever the corporate title is, I'm not sure what it is, Eastman Meadows LLC, whatever it's called, has been unable to find buyers willing to spend almost $400,000 and to have a restriction on their property that says that any gain in the value of the house needs to be split evenly between the town and themselves. People just aren't willing to spend $400,000 to deal with that provision. The planning board's looking at this, they're looking at, they're having, I think, a public hearing, I think, this month, on some technical amendments to the ordinance that would change the provision so that the numbers should work a lot better and perhaps be realistic. So we're not into this. But in the meantime, you know, Joel Fitzpatrick, as the owner, has, you know, shown us data that has looked at how long the houses have been on the market, and, you know, that he's tried to sell them for this amount, has done, you know, all the due diligence, and just can't sell them. So there's a provision in the ordinance that says that you can waive the town's right to purchase the units that have remained unsold, because there's a provision that if they're unsold, we have to buy them. We're not really interested in doing that. But you can waive that requirement and that the monies, that they could be sold to non-qualified buyers at market rates with any excess over the $395,022 for each unit to provide to the town for other affordable housing. So it'd make them saleable, it would make, put them out available for the market. The developer doesn't make any more money, other than the fact he gets rid of the burden of trying to sell them for rates that no one wants to buy them at. So I'd recommend that you approve the, the waiving your right to purchase them with the understanding that the two units could be sold to non-qualified buyers at market rate with any excess over $395,022 for each unit to be provided to the town to put in an account for other affordable housing.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Sure. I move that we waive the town's right to purchase two affordable housing units at Eastman Meadows that have remained unsold for some time. The two units could be sold to non-qualified buyers at the market rates with any excess over $395,022, for each unit to be provided to the town for other affordable housing.
Is there a second? Councilor Lennon? Any discussion?
I have a question. So, Councilor Lennon, you brought us back, we dealt with this previously. For two separate units, right? Have those sold, and have we recognized any gains from those? Do you know? Mike?
I don't know the answer. I, I believe they did, and I, I'm sure there's money in the account that does it. I can, I'll get, I don't know if it's, I'll get you that information, find out what it is. I'll give it, I won't give it to you, I'll send an email to the whole town.
Sure, thanks.
We'll post it online, the answer.
Councilor Jordan?
So I was just joking with Councilor Garvin that, well, hopefully maybe there will be a bidding war, and the price will go up, and we can slip that back into the land acquisition.
We'll go into affordable housing.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor? It's approved. Item 94, 2016, year-end budget shortfalls. The overall budget is in great shape as we near the end of the fiscal year. Charter provides that no department is permitted to exceed its budget without council authorization. Again, town manager could just tell us a little more about these items.
For at least two straight years, and I haven't looked back at previous years, we have two departments that have not been able to stay within their appropriations for the appropriate fiscal year. One is human services, and it's solely because of general assistance payments that are mandated by the state, and involves helping out some needy families with, particularly with housing needs in the year beginning July 1. So it's proposed to revise the appropriation from $52,607 to $80,000. We've spent about $70,000 at the, as of June 1. There's an allowance in there to make sure we can account for the needs in, in June. Secondly, facilities management, it's about the same as last year. It's proposed to revise the appropriation by a little over $12,655 up to $225,000. And that's, you know, we get, we get a lot of contracts, like to take care of elevators, elevator inspections, and sprinklers, and it just, you know, permits for this, permits for that, the state, as well as, you know, all of the repairs. You know, we're just over budget, and not a place we like to be. But overall, you look at the budget, and, you know, we're, we're in great shape. But these two accounts need, need your, need your support, and without it, we'd be in real tough shape in human services, because we're mandated by the state to provide for those needs. And the facilities management, you know, it's, we've overspent it just a little bit, and I've created a little bit of allowance in case some things go wrong, as they often do, between now and the end of the month.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilor Lennon?
Can I just ask a quick question? Why don't we just put more in the budget for these if they continually run up above them?
We, we need to. You know, in fact.
How long is budget season next?
Through the chair. Before I put together next year's budget, I'm going to look at not only this year and last year, but I'm going to take the time to look at the last few years to see what the patterns. But I think with the human services, it was hoped that, you know, the recession would be over, but, you know, everyone knows that the recession didn't lift all boats, and some people are still having challenges, and as a result, that has not gone down like we would have hoped that it might have.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I hope that we approve the additional appropriations to the budget. In, for 10, human services, we revised appropriation from $52,607 to $88, I'm sorry, $80,000. And in the 600s, the facility management, we revised the appropriation from $212,345 to $225,000.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councilor Greenwich? Any, any discussion? Any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor? It's approved. All right, that's the end of items on tonight's agenda. At this moment, citizens may raise any topic that's not on the agenda but pertains to Cape Elizabeth government, seeing no one.
Could I comment on that?
Yes.
Kathy Ray, when I was, I was going over the agenda with her to prepare her for chair in the meeting, she questioned the wording on this. And, and I just, this wording, it sometimes has been used, but it's not been used recently.
Right.
And, and the feeling is that this is citizens item not on the agenda. The intent is, that it has to pertain to something to local government, and that, well, we don't want it to be just a forum for someone to come and say why Donald Trump ought to be elected president, or why, you know, the Libertarian Party candidate ought to be elected president, or Hillary ought to be. So anyway, that's, the intent is that the issues have to pertain to Cape Elizabeth local government, and that we think and believe that's the intent of what's in the council rules.
Thank you. You know, I, I saw that, and I liked it. I thought, oh, this is good. So anyway, okay. May I? You have a motion? Second it. Councilor Greenwich? All those in favor? We are adjourned.